All right, I'll call the meeting to order. Do please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right, we will do, uh, I don't think we have anyone online, but we'll do a roll call just in case.
Very quickly?
Yep, very quickly.
So again, board members, if you can just say here and if there's anyone online, um, so we can hear them. Wendy?
Here.
Kristin?
Here.
David G told us he would be absent. Annie?
Here.
Tyler?
Here.
Christine told us she would be absent. Leslie?
Here.
Patricia?
Here.
Rebecca?
Here.
Sean?
Here.
Brian is absent tonight. David T?
Here.
And Tom?
Here.
Claire?
Here.
And Ben is absent today. Thank you. So all votes will just be by shot hands.
Yep, all right. Uh, first up will be our student representatives' reports. If Cooper and Sawyer could step up and give their reports for the high school.
Hello, um, we're reporting on behalf of Student Senate at the high school. Um, so yeah, they give you a brief rundown on what the Student Senate is working on. The Outreach Committee is currently in the middle of planning our Make a Difference Week and have recently confirmed that Craig Hickman will come in as a guest speaker for that event. The Wellness Committee is working on a suicide prevention campaign as well as coordinating with the Health Center to make it easier to access winter clothing for those who need it as it is quickly getting colder, as well as working on designing new Bear Cave t-shirts for supporting our sporting events.
Uh, oh yeah, and there's also School Spirit. Um, they're working on, uh, ratifying some of the details for, um, the pep rally we have, uh, this Friday, October 4th. Um, they also talked about, as always, um, three theme days for homecoming week. Um, here's some ideas like surfers for spikers, celebrity day, and decades day. And, um, leading up to the dance on Saturday, uh, October 12th, um, they've chosen the theme, um, fire and ice. They are also trying to come up with, um, Bear Cave dress up themes for all of the home games next week in total. And, um, their main focus this year, um, hold on. Uh, their main focus this year is to increase, uh, School Spirit through, um, whole student body and, um, more create more of a positive culture environment for the whole school. That's pretty much it.
Yeah, um, yeah, a couple more things. The Student Voice Committee is working on organizing a club fair to help increase awareness of the different activities that you can take part in at the high school, which will take place on October 18th. And after that point, they're gonna start working on planning for the Neon Night Dance. And the Technology Committee has been working to get the display in the lobby up and running fully this year to help spread information about school events and others. That is all.
Nice, thank you both. Looks like, uh, homecoming week's gonna be a lot of fun.
Yeah.
Citizens comments? Uh, Barbara, Bruce Begoyne, you wanna step up?
Hello, um, I'm Barbara Begoyne. I'm a resident of Reed Field, um, former district employee. Um, we're here to make a suggestion, and so all we're asking for is for you to just listen. Um, we've long been supportive of the annual school budget, um, but we're here to talk to you about the process by which budget decisions are made prior to presenting a final budget in June. We understand that budget meetings are open to anyone in the community who would like to listen and have input. We have watched some of these meetings on Zoom. The fact remains, however, that most residents of our communities do not have enough background knowledge to understand the intricacies of an almost $23 million budget. Citizens of our communities put their faith in elected board members such as yourselves to make the best decisions possible. We and others, however, have been concerned that board members themselves have expressed at meetings their discomfort with weighing such significant choices. Understandable, because the issues are complex and some of you may bring limited budgetary experience to the table. So here are some questions that seem to arise every year. Do you consider budget decisions based on reported data? Do we have all the data we need to make the best decisions? Do you heed school personnel who request specific help with new projects without knowing if sacrifices were made to bring those requests to the table? How do you satisfy the group of parents who show up at meetings to advocate for their children? And what happens when one group speaks louder than another group who may not be able to advocate in the same way? There will always be equity issues. How do you make decisions on class sizes, curriculum offerings, extracurriculars? We are suggesting that the board set up a finance committee to begin working on budget issues for the next several fiscal years. Our thoughts are that budget considerations could be made more holistically by a smaller group of people with budgetary experience and then present it to the full board for final decisions. It used to work this way at Moranoke and it was an efficient way to solidify community input in the process as well as reduce pressure on the superintendent and school board members. We hope you are open to our idea, our ideas. Bruce would like to share with you how the Finance Committee operated at Moranoke in the past as he was a member for several years.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody. Um, first of all, I want to just thank you for serving on, on the school board. It's a lot of work and the budget process itself is complex. Um, I was fortunate to serve as the Finance Committee Chair for the CSD number 10. I guess you would, some of it's probably in the last century and some of it was in this century. I also served on Select Board in Reed Field. So I, um, that's just to tell you that I've kinda looked at the budget from a couple of different angles and a couple of different sides. Um, I did wanna talk a little bit about my exposure to coming to this board meeting as a member of the Select Board and observing you working as a committee of the whole on the budget and wondering about the efficiency of that and wondering about how you feel about the efficiency of that. Um, and it kinda brought up just some memories about how we did it on the Consolidated School District number 10. And basically, we had a member from each community serve on that as a subcommittee of, um, of the board and then report back to the board. Um, we met more often and we did a deeper dive into the budget so that we could answer questions and be responsible to the rest of the board. Um, it gave an opportunity for more conversations, if you will. And actually, all those mem, all those meetings were certainly open to the public and, um, in some respects, they were almost like quasi-public hearings because we did allow quite a bit of commentary from the public. Um, and the members of that committee were people who either had some budgetary experience or some budgetary interests. And, you know, I don't say that experience necessarily counts for everything in the world, but certainly interest and a willingness to do that deep dive work, uh, does. Um, I was fortunate to serve on that. Um, some of you from Mount Vernon may remember Russ Libby. He was the vice chair of that Finance Committee and his interest and background was from kind of a nonprofit and was from a, uh, a government and, uh, private corporation, um, background handling multimillion dollar budgets. Um, the delegation did allow for some really good due diligence and better citizen, uh, input, I think, on workflow. I do wanna say something about doing the budget as a committee of the whole. Um, I do think there's some inefficiencies that result in that. And I have heard some of the comments that Barbara mentioned about discomfort by board members regarding doing it in that manner. Um, you still have responsibility for the budget as a whole. That would never go away. You're voted by citizens to approve a budget and put it forth to voters. Um, if you have a subcommittee that works deeper on that and brings forward to you its recommendations. And the way we worked, it just happened to be, we didn't actually take votes. We were four towns, unequal population and all that. Um, and so we just arrived at our recommendations to the overall board, um, by our own consensus. And then obviously, the votes that needed to be taken to put that in the format to bring to voters was done by the board as a whole and that remained their responsibility. I mean, if you think of, um, delegation, everybody signed the Declaration of Independence, but really only four people wrote it. Um, same thing with the legislature. A lot of bills are heard in committee and then they're voted, um, on many more general questions and, and a deeper dive, if you will, um, by the whole body. Um, there are a few things that we had to bear in mind. We had to stay kind of aligned with the strategic plans and early in our process, we would make, we would have some discussion about that 'cause we wanted to be, uh, in alignment with the strategic plan of the Finance Committee and what we perhaps brought forward. Um, we were able to take a longer view and I think that's probably the entire value there. Am I overstaying the time?
No, no.
Okay.
You can finish up in a minute, that'd be great.
Yeah, I will finish up in a minute.
Yeah.
Um, we were able to take a longer view and discuss waypoint steps. And I think that's, I, I think that's really important because it's very hard in, um, this large group, I think, to do that step back consideration and have a more robust conversation, if you will, about where we're going and how things align with the strategic vision. And things get a little rushed, so if you had a Finance Committee and if somebody is on it, um, it will be more work. But, you know, we're all elected public officials to do a certain amount of work and, and we have passions and interests. And so I think that's certainly something, uh, that you could build within, um, the current RSU process, budget process. I think too, uh, one of the things we tried to do is keep ourselves very aware of community relationships and resources. Um, and, uh, again, as a Select Board member, um, community resources kinda has like a S with a couple lines through it, um, is an important part of that consideration. It's not everything because I'm a believer in delivering good services, so I wanna make those investments, but strategically over time, how do you make them and make them work for the community? So that's what I have. It was the pleasure of our chair or any members. I would be happy to answer a question or two now or at any point in the future.
Thank you so much. Um, I wanted to let you know we are looking at changing how we do the budget in the process and they'll actually either come or tune in online. There'll be a presentation next meeting to see if it kinda fits into what you talked about.
Okay.
Would be open to suggestions.
I, I would respectfully ask that you consider it in the process of building that.
Yeah.
New approach, if you would.
Yep, yep.
Good luck. Thanks again for serving.
Yes, thank you both again. Um, next up, we have Dr. Daniels.
Good evening. So my name's Dr. Cassidy Daniels. I wanted to talk about an event that happened during the meeting of September 18th where the phrase silence is consent was used. I would like to take this opportunity to remind us that silence is not consent. Just because someone is quiet or not saying anything doesn't mean they consent or agree with what is being said. Our job as parents and educators is to ensure that we are teaching through demonstration that obtaining explicit and enthusiastic consent in any situation is crucial to ensuring that all parties involved are comfortable and willing participants. Silence can occur when individuals are presented with new information or feel pressured to make a quick decision without fully understanding the implications. It's important to understand that silence doesn't necessarily mean agreement or disagreement. Instead, it provides a space for contemplation. As parents and educators, it's crucial to ensure that everyone has the opportunity to process information before expressing agreement. Silence should not always be interpreted as an endorsement of the information or statements presented. Consent is a crucial focal point when raising children in today's world. Children are taught from a young age that cons, what consent is and that they have a voice. They are taught at school and home that they can decide whether to hug someone, play with others, or engage in verbal topics. Consent serves as a powerful tool in fostering a culture of respect, communication, and understanding. As adults around children, we must demonstrate appropriate behavior and teach them that silence does not mean consent. Allowing adults to imply that silence is consent teaches children that they do not have a safe space, leading to potentially dangerous interpretations and poor decision-making. As the adults our children look up to, it is our responsibility to do better and show that silence is not consent. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you just identify what town you're from on that? Thanks for the record.
I apologize, Manchester.
Yep, thank you so much. Maybe something new, but I, yeah, thanks. Thank you. I don't have any others on the list. Uh, any online? Diane? Nope, no one online. All right, additions, adjustments to the agenda by the board or superintendent?
Yeah, I have a couple of adjustments. Um, so on 7A, um, the minutes are actually in your folder and we will need to vote on that date. Um, I also wanna add a 7F would, would be approval of the September 18th minutes, which are actually in your packet. So we just kinda had them out of order there. So we need a 7F to approve this, the September 18th minutes.
Got you.
Okay? And then the last one I have for tonight is 7G, um, an acceptance of the resignation of Adam Scarpone, middle school music teacher.
All right. Anything else?
That's it from me.
All right, um, we'll move on to reports. Celebrations?
I don't have any formal celebrations other than to invite everyone to, and I know the high school kids spoke about it. Um, there's been a lot of work put into getting ready for homecoming, which is next week. Um, there is, uh, something happening almost every day after school next week. And if you have the ability and time to make it, it would be most welcome, uh, to show support to the students as they're taking part in their activities for homecoming. So just thought I'd put that plug out there for everyone. Um, just so you know, if you show up, there's something going on after school every day, um, sports-wise. Um, and then again, the students have a couple of, uh, special events happening as well. So just wanted to put that out there.
Great. Uh, any questions about any of the reports?
And again, a reminder, the middle school report was included in your folders as well. So, um, as was the Health Center, Health Center report.
All right, we'll move right along. And then there's just some notices about some committees that are coming up. There's a number that are happening, so please look at those dates 'cause I know we're all on committees. Um, and then there's just a first reading. I just wanna flag, there's no vote, but if you have, uh, any changes to those policies or anything or any recommendations, you can email those to Jay.
Yep, or, and I don't know if Wendy would like to talk 'cause we did, we did have a policy meeting, so Wendy may wanna do a little bit of reporting.
Yeah, if you wanna give it up there, that'd be great.
Yeah, briefly, um, what you read today, the law has changed in regards to these policies and we felt it was very important to get them updated and out to the board right away to start the approval process. Um, if you look at the difference between the two, there's a lot more bullet points, which makes the policies easy to read, and the bold headings and concise small paragraphs explain policy simply and effectively. And there may be a few more changes next time you read them because we had to ask, uh, legal, um, about some of the new policies. We, they were unclear, um, and there might be some changes next week, next meeting when you see them for the second read. So if you have, if you see anything you don't understand, please contact me or Jay or anyone on the board. Um, Annie, Tyler, um, with, um, questions or things you see. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Um, next up is action items, discussion, informational items. All right, first up is approval of minutes of September 4th, 2024, board meeting. I move to approve the minutes of September 4th, board meeting is read.
Second.
All right, have been moved in second and discussion. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor? I think, yep, unanimous, yep, everyone hands up. All right, unanimous. All right, moving right along. Consideration of requests for extended leave of absence through June 2025. Tricia Walters, grade five, Wayne Elementary.
I move to accept Tricia Walters', um, application for extending her time.
Second.
All right, moved in second and discussion. Jay, do you have a recommendation?
Yeah, I, um, obviously I'm bringing it to you 'cause I do, um, have a recommendation that we approve, um, her request for a leave of absence. And we already have someone, uh, prepared and waiting in the wings. So it's all kind of in place, we just need your support.
All right, thank you. Any more questions? All right, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? Unanimous, thanks. Uh, consideration of overnight travel. Uh, Moranoke Middle School, Chonky Outdoor Classroom, April 29th to May 2nd, 2025. I move to approve the overnight field trip is read.
Second.
Having been moved in second and? Can we add in the motion that I can't be a chaperone? Because my son's already on his way. All right, uh, seeing no discussion, all those in favor? All right, unanimous. No, I'm just not big about sweeping outside, so. Uh, but it sounds fun. Review and approval of draft board goals. I think that was in our packet from last time, right? Am I correct?
Yep.
Wanna take a minute just to look it over to make sure it reflects everything we discussed in length last time? Wanna take a minute to do that? Any, they look good to me. Does anyone have anything they want changed? I mean, I know we spent a lot of time on this. All right, do we, I don't think, do we need a formal vote?
I think we need to approve the minutes that are cast.
Um, I would suggest we just have a formal vote on it just so that, uh, we've endorsed them as a board.
Yep, yep.
I move to adopt the board of director goals for 2024-2025 is read.
Second.
All right, having been moved in second, any more discussion? Look forward to working through these and with the A team and everybody to make these happen to the best we can. All right, all in favor? Unanimous. Okay. Good, did that one. Approval of return to learn plan.
There we go. I move to approve the return to learn plan is read.
Second.
Having been moved in second and discussion, Jay, do you wanna?
Yes, um, we need, it needed to be done every six months. The, um, period is ending in October here, so this will be the last time you see this formal plan, uh, presented to the board as it was a requirement, um, for, uh, funding through ESAR and being able to get reimbursed for ESAR funds. So, um, officially, everything had to be spent, um, September 30th and it needs to be invoiced and everything kinda paid for and reimbursed and everything, um, by the end of December. So this just fell in, the way we've done it fell in the window of we needed to do it one last time, so.
All right.
I have a question about it. So, um, we won't be referring back to it after that time?
We will not, not in this format, no. We will probably be having further discussions about what next, but it won't be in this format for sure.
Okay. So we, it's gonna be completely revisited?
We will definitely be revisiting it. Should we have another pandemic, we should have something in place and ready to go.
After, remind me of the date?
So at the end of December, like, that's when the, everything needs to be invoiced, spent, requisitioned, all that kinda stuff.
Okay.
So, yeah. So, and it was all contingent upon being able to use those funds, so.
Um, I ju, I do have a just a question about it.
Yeah.
So I actually made a lot of notes on it, but that being said, um, I guess maybe not as many. Um, so it says RSU 38 will follow guidance from the main Department of Education and the Centers for Disease Control. I know in order to get funding, we do have to follow the Department of Education. Do we have to follow the CDC also for funding?
Um, after this plan is done, I would say no.
Okay.
If we choose not to, right.
Okay. So I think that is definitely important to put in the language. Even if we said, um, we followed the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention will be considered.
Yeah.
Not follow, you know, consider.
Yes.
You know, I think it's important, if anything ever happens like this again, that we do our own research. So.
Yep.
Thank you.
And I would love, Christine, I'm just gonna, or Kristen, I'm just gonna throw this out there. If you would like to share your notes, I would love to have them. So as we go forward, we, um, are taking them into consideration, so.
Very scribbled, but I will, I will get together with you or.
Okay, that would be great, yes.
Just tell you what I found and thank you.
Sounds good.
All right, any other questions or discussion? All right, all in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Uh, approval of September 18th board minutes.
I move to approve the minutes of the September 18th board meeting.
Second.
All right, everyone moved in second and discussion. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor? All right, unanimous. Um, now we're moving on to G, right?
Yep.
G, sorry, my handwriting, can't remember. Acceptance of resignation of Adam Scarpone, middle school music teacher.
I move, we accept the resignation of Adam Scarpone.
All right, and it has been, uh, whoops, me, a second, sorry.
Second.
Yep, nevermind. Yeah, I was ahead of myself. That's been moved in second and, um, discussion?
Is it okay if I just, just to give people a quick update? Because I know, um, it's kinda sudden with this news. So we will be meeting with the music. We have a, um, a substitute in place as a temporary, um, kinda fix for right now, but we are going to be meeting with the music team, which, um, includes the other three music teachers in the district and a couple of principals, um, to look at what we wanna do moving forward so that we can make sure that music gets covered. And that will be happening either Friday or Monday. Um, and so we're gonna get a team involved in that. We will advertise, a general advertisement, um, we will put that out tomorrow. Um, and after we talk to the team, then we can kinda refine that, what we're looking for, um, in terms of the music teacher. So, um, so we'll have a team approach to getting it taken care of and they will be heavily involved in, uh, helping us figure this out, so.
Go ahead.
I just wanna say thank you, Jay, 'cause I appreciate, um, I just totally lost my train of thought, I'm sorry, I'm exhausted tonight.
Well, I think, I appreciate, 'cause I know how important music is.
Thank you, thank you.
No, what I wanted to say was that, um, I appreciate you bringing the whole team in and to asking them how they see it going forward. I really appreciate that, thank you, that's all I wanna say.
Absolutely.
And when we have a substitute, um, in this type of, uh, structure for a middle school, um, they're covering class, but there's also an advisory group.
Yes.
Under that, um, under that individual. So while we may have a substitute music teacher. So while we may have a substitute music teacher, where does the advisor sort of cover it?
So that will be something that we will grapple with, like when I have a chance to meet that, obviously, Principal Saroyz will be part of that conversation and addressing that specific question on how we're going to handle that.
Great, asking for a friend.
Rick, do you want to respond? You certainly can do that, if you're prepared.
That would be helpful.
Yep.
Thank you. Yeah, obviously, you know, it's not the perfect scenario at this point in the year to be down an advisor. We have had a substitute and an internal actually employee as an ed tech that doesn't serve as an advisor, that has filled that role pretty well. What they don't have access to is our SEL curriculum, so other sixth-grade level advisors have stepped up and joined, you know, that group. This morning, my group joined Mr. Scarpone's group for our second step lesson, so it's not perfect, but it's moving forward, and we're making it work the best we can right now. But I think the meeting that Jay referred to is going to shed a lot of light on the direction moving forward, so. Thank you.
All right, thanks. Any more questions or discussion?
And if I can just throw out, Sean, like I know there's chamber singers and, or chamber choir, excuse me, and other kind of very important music programs, so that's going to be all folded into that discussion, so we can get that going, so, yeah. Just so people are aware.
Yes, no, no, that's all good stuff. All right, call for a vote. All in favor? I think it's unanimous? Yep, it's unanimous. All right. Now we need a motion for executive session to discuss and review information and confidential records pursuant to 1 MRSA 405-6F.
I move to enter executive session pursuant to 1 MRSA subsection 405, section 6F.
Second.
Having been moved in second, all those in favor? Okay, all right. Pat, you?
Oh, I, I know.
Okay. Unanimous? All right, thank you. All right, we will go.
And it's 702, and we're going back to the music room again, so.
All right, thanks.
Move to adjourn.
You good, Diane?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn?